Soccer facilities for the San Fernando Valley.
If you're a senior and you have a computer, well, you're one of the lucky ones. You can share photos of your grandchildren and talk with them online. But many other low-income seniors can't do that because they don't have a computer. As Gil Reyes shows us, the city is hoping to change that. Gil?
Well, Yana, as you know, we've covered extensively the rollout of these free hour-cycle computers in low-income neighborhoods, also at summer camp for disadvantaged children. But this is the first such rollout in a low-income housing community for seniors, so they too could bridge the digital divide. How you feel?
Yeah, I'm so happy.
Young Ju Burnett is among the 90 tenants in the senior living community in Jefferson Park receiving free computers, Wi-Fi included.
They all go through a computer training course, which they just finished, and will actually be assisting them inside their units, hooking up the computers to make sure they're 100% working and they're ready to be used.
Hello.
Hello.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's the latest giveaway in the HourCycle LA program. HourCycle has taken thousands of old City of L.A. computers, and instead of throwing them away, repairs them for people in need. The city's Information Technology Agency, or ITA, came up with the idea. It hired the nonprofit group Human IT to do the repairs, and together, they work with the Housing Authority of the City of Los Angeles to find recipients.
Not only do you have inter-agency collaboration here, but you have summer youth workers earning $10.50 an hour, just gaining valuable experience, helping us distribute this technology. So, I mean, it's a perfect marriage of all these sort of entities coming together for a really good cause.
Johann Palacios, a paid student intern from Contreras Learning Academy, is also helping the mostly Korean-American tenants reconnect with family back in Korea through email. Many of them have never owned a computer. This class teaches the basics.
We should like get back to the community. Doesn't matter like to who, it's just as long as you do something helpful. Like personally, I feel like really good about it.
A lot of people are physically disabled, so they can't leave this location. So now they really have the world at their fingertips.
By finally entering the digital age. In Jefferson Park, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
Since its launch a year and a half ago, HourCycle has given away refurbished computers to underserved areas in Koreatown, Baldwin Village, and San Pedro. Well, turning now to the port of L.A., where a gateway to the sea has opened for students at Cal State Dominguez Hills and Harbor College. And it's a chance for them to take the plunge at one of the largest and busiest ports. Rasha Goel has more.
And in fact, many of us, like myself, were the first in our families to graduate from college. And also, I was the first in my family to get a graduate degree. I've met a lot of the students and their families, and we have a lot of similarities.
And that's why Executive Director at the Port of Los Angeles, Jean Soroka, is hoping that the signing of this memorandum of understanding with California State University Dominguez Hills and Los Angeles Harbor College will help boost interest in a career at the port of L.A.
They're teaming up with the Port of Los Angeles to ensure our students enter the job market prepared, competitive, and confident.
The agreement will train students who are interested in careers in port operations and logistics.
Our students from the community, at whatever level and whatever their career goals may be, is certainly going to benefit from this great opportunity.
Fifteen paid internships will be available to students who are studying global logistics or a related field. In addition, employees from the Port of Los Angeles will also visit both campuses as guest lecturers.
And we'll ask the students what their likes and dislikes are, so we can match up maybe some areas of strength with what our department wants to do. But also, if there's area that needs improvement, and they want to really hone up on certain skills, we can maybe match that skill set up as well.
Officials say it's truly a rare opportunity to work one-on-one with port professionals and learn firsthand from their experiences.
This kind of partnership, a partnership between a community college, a four-year college, and a business industry, that's not the norm. But it should be. And what we're hoping is that this MOU and what we're doing will serve as a model for other industry leaders to engage in.
And for today, it's the first step in engaging and exposing students to jobs right in their own backyard. In San Pedro, I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. This Week.
The Port of L.A. facilitates more than 133,000 jobs in the City of L.A. and 2.8 million jobs nationwide. Well, from a career on the sea to a career in the sciences, if your child has a knack for math and research, they could help find cures for deadly diseases through a program at Cedar Sinai. Gil Reyes reports on stem cell research as a cutting-edge career.
High school kids aspiring to be doctors and scientists one day get to live out their dreams for a week, working in professional laboratories over the summer.
It's the type of work that usually people my age don't get the chance to do. So it's honestly a great experience to go and use resources that aren't really available to people my age.
Cedar Sinai Medical Center opens its research labs to around 20 L.A.-unified high school students during its minors in research program.
We have a one-week time for the students to immerse themselves in stem cells, in the laboratory, and see our scientists working day-to-day and how we're using stem cells to both treat and model human diseases.
Clive Svensson of the Regenerative Medicine Institute calls stem cell research "the most cutting-edge area of science." It makes the use of pluripotent stem cells, which can be programmed to produce any cell in the human body. This could one day cure Crohn's disease, juvenile diabetes, spinal cord injuries, even baldness. These young people could be administering treatments one day. Today, they're apprentices.
So we break them up into groups of two or three, and we pair them with scientists from the institute, and they will have a project that they will work on in the laboratory.
At the end of the week, the interns will present their findings to around 100 professional scientists. Palisades Charter High School student Orben Shlomo calls it "a chance of a lifetime."
And so actual live experience, hands-on, with a mentor is great. And I also get a paper out of it. So I got my name on a paper published in some magazine, and that's great.
Great, all right, and just a sample of greater things to come for these budding young scientists. At Cedar Sinai Medical Center, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
Cedar Sinai is home to one of the top institutes for stem cell research, research that might one day also cure Alzheimer's and heart disease. But being able to find those cures begins early by laying the groundwork for good study habits. As the new school year gets underway, it's important that kids have the supplies they need to learn and excel. As Anna Marcos shows us, some kids in Watts are off to a great start.
In Watts, getting kids ready for another school year is reason enough for a block party. This one, the Watts Back-to-School Community Block Party, has become a seven-year tradition. One of the highlights, a backpack giveaway for 550 lucky schoolchildren.
Well, what's gonna happen is, they don't have to cry when they go to school the first day with other children having backpacks, and they don't have any backpacks. And it makes it look as if nobody cares about them because the parents is not working and they can't do it.
Many kids and families in the neighborhood come from poverty or disadvantaged backgrounds, and a backpack full of school supplies is a pretty big deal.
To see the joy and the expressions of joy on these kids' faces, as well as the parents, it just does my heart good. This community has endured a lot.
To sweeten the deal, event organizers are also giving the kids a $5 coupon to start a savings account. Enticements to do well in school? Definitely.
We know for research that a kid that starts savings at a very early age, they have seven times more chances to finish college. So that's why it's so important for us to create that habit.
It makes them have the love when they go back into the classroom, not the hate. Because if you have love, you won't bother people. But if you go in there with hate, you're not gonna study too well and get along with the rest of them.
A little folk wisdom, a backpack, some face painting, and some burgers. Sounds like the recipe for a great start to a brand-new school year. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
Now, in addition to supplies, books also play a huge role in our students' success. But did you know that 31 million children in the U.S. don't have access to books in their home, including those right here in L.A.? But as Gil Reyes reports, generous donations are helping to change that. And this is the back of the book.
Storytime at the Women, Infants, and Children Center in Watts comes with a surprise this week: free children's books for center recipients like Kay Von Roten and her kids.
Um, I love it. It's, it's, my kids love to read. I love to read to them, you know? It's just awesome.
The giveaway courtesy of the Books Across America program. Books Across America is an effort announced on the Dr. Oz Show to deliver much-needed books to families in need. In a week's time in May, 45,000 books nationwide were collected.
People were really generous. We were so surprised. And the WIC centers, over 700 of them, are distributing them to low-income families. So they're getting in the hands of moms, dads, caregivers of children under the age of five, which is exactly what we wanted.
Renee Frazier of Frazier Communications says reading to kids during those first five years is critical for successful childhood development and academic success. Women, Infants, and Children, or WIC centers like this one, primarily offer food services to struggling families, but opened its doors for the book giveaway as another way to help. This WIC center is located in the Watts Health Center.
A good majority of our patients, but WIC is open to the community. We have actually five WIC sites.
Sandra Brooks is children's librarian at the nearby Watts Library. She has advice for parents beyond books.
If you're having a problem reading to your child, pick up a newspaper, or a book, or just tell them what you're doing. You don't have to do anything special. If you're doing something, you're going to the grocery store, and you're making a list, tell them, "I'm putting milk on this list, I'm putting bananas on this list." Children love to hear your voice, so always talk to them.
And help ensure their future success. In Watts, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
The Dr. Oz Show worked with First Five California and UPS to collect and deliver the books all across the country. Well, LAX has gone to the dogs, but that's a good thing if you travel with your beloved four-legged friend. Rasha Goel shows us how LAX is giving our canine companions the first-class treatment.
Don't worry about stepping into it, because LAX is taking care of it. Eight indoor animal relief stations and three outdoor stations are now open at LAX, and will give our four-legged friends and passengers some relief while waiting for their flights.
Our guests that are traveling with service animals and pets will now have the convenience of staying inside our terminal concourses, not having to leave their boarding areas for their pets to be relieved and go through security. So this is a very effective and efficient way of our passengers being able to come through security one time, and then, when needed, have a facility here for their pets to find relief.
With a total of 11 stations, LAX has the highest number of animal relief stations in any other airport in the United States. And not only will these stations be helpful for the passengers, but they'll also be helpful for the dogs that work here. The opening of the stations coincided with this year's National Work Like a Dog Day, which gave airport officials an opportunity to honor service, law enforcement, and therapy animals at LAX.
Our pups roam throughout the terminals to provide affection and comfort that, again, relieves some of the stress and anxiety that some passengers experience when traveling through airports.
LAX's Pup Program, or Pets Unstressing Passengers, currently has 55 volunteer dogs and is the largest therapy dog program among all U.S. airports.
They just really needed to be with the dog, and they couldn't believe there was one at LAX of all places.
With the relief stations, LAX is returning the love that our animal friends give us every day. At LAX, I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. This Week.
Now, if you want more information on where the relief stations are located, visit lawa.org/welcomeLAX. While an art exhibit highlights the creative flair of L.A. artists, grab your family and friends for an outdoor movie screening in Silver Lake. And if you ever wanted to spend more time at Grand Central Market, well, now you can. All this and this week's Things to Do. As part of an ongoing series made in L.A. 2016, A. The Though Only highlights the practices of artists working throughout Los Angeles and the surrounding areas. It addresses Los Angeles as a center of activity and reveals how artists move fluidly between contexts and respond to their local conditions. Made in L.A. 2016 extends into dance, fashion, literature, music, film, and performance. It closes on August 28th, so don't miss it. For more, visit hammer.ucla.edu. Join the Silver Lake Picture Show for its 15th anniversary screening of Super Troopers. As always, show up early for free musical performance and short film from local artists to get the best spot and to eat delicious food from local restaurants. The screening takes place on September 1st at 7:00 p.m. at the Sunset Triangle Plaza located at 1523 Griffith Park Boulevard. For more, visit silverlakepictureshow.com. Ever wanted to enjoy Grand Central Market a little bit longer? Well, now you can, as it launches summer nights by expanding their hours every evening until 10:00 p.m. Along with special programming, you can expect live music, evening menu specials, a massive happy hour, and free shuttle services to a wide range of entertainment venues. Most of the market's vendors will remain open until the very end, so take your time, sit back, and relax. For more, visit grandcentralmarket.com. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay, and from all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. This Week.
Where is this guy?
So thirsty.
I hear he travels from the north.
Look!
That one's real dry.
L.A. is in a drought, yet over half of our drinking water is being used for landscaping. But it doesn't have to be that way. Just one inch of rain can yield thousands of gallons of water for use in landscaping. It saves drinking water for drinking. Rain barrels, cisterns, and curb cuts are just a few ways to save water and energy. For more, visit LADWP and the Bay Foundation online.
Excellent. Cut, print, we're moving on. Hi, I'm Shane Woodson on the set of Cain and Abel here in Hollywood. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Okay, I need my actor is back on set, back in position.
Good morning. Uh, I want to welcome you to the City Council. Sergeants, please call the members. Have the members report to the council chambers. I want to thank Mr. Englander, Mr. Bonin, Englander, Weezer, Corretts, Krikorian, and Mr. Rue for being members of today's On Time Caucus. Members, if you're in your offices, please report to the council chambers so that we can begin our work for today. Okay, again, Mr. Bonin, Mr. Englander, Mr. Weezer, Corretts, Mr. Krikorian, and Mr. O'Farrell. Thank you, guys, for being part of today's On Time Caucus. Members, if you're in your offices, please report to the council chambers so that we can begin today's work. Mr. Buscaino. Good morning. Good morning to everyone. Today is Tuesday. It is August 23rd. Would like to welcome you to your Los Angeles City Council meeting. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Would you please call the roll?
Blumenfeld, Bonin, Buscaino, Cedillo, Englander, Fuentes, Harris, Dawson, Weezer, Corretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, Wesson, 10 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Bonin moves. Mr. Englander seconds. Next?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Paul Corretts moves, and Mr. Weezer seconds. Next?
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and time for the flag salute.
Okay, why don't we all rise? I will ask that we are led by Mr. Paul Corretts. If Mr. Corretts could lead us in our pledge?
Please put your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Want to thank you for that, Mr. Corretts. Why don't we go through the agenda?
Mr. President, there are requests to continue item numbers 13, 14, 27, and 28 to August 31st.
Okay, so without objection, that will be the order. Next?
There are requests from the Department of Building and Safety to receive and file the following items: 1A, B, I, O, P, and Y, as the liens have been paid in full; 1Q and R due to ownership changes; and 1H and X as the properties have been determined to be owner-occupied, single-family dwellings exempt from lien procedures.
Okay, thank you. So without objection, that'll be the order. Would you please continue? No, excuse me. Mr. Englander.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item G on that, if we can continue it for 30 days, please.
Do you have that, Madam Clerk?
I do, and 1G is continue for 30 days to September 21st.
Okay, let's continue.
Items 1 through 9 are items noticed for public hearing.
Do we have Mr. Krikorian?
President, I'd also like to ask that item 1AC be continued for 30 days, please.
Okay, 1AC for Mr. Krikorian, 30 days. September 21st, I believe, would be that date. Mr. Buscaino?
President, also, if we can continue item 1AB for two weeks, please.
Okay, for two weeks?
Yes.
Okay, we'll continue that one until September 6th. Okay, uh, do we have cards on items 1 through 9?
Yes, there are cards on 1, 2, 7, and 9.
Okay, let's hold those items and let us prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Continue.
Mr. President, that takes us to items 10 through 21, which are items for which public hearings have been held. There is a request to hold item 18.
Okay, well, let's hold item 18. Members? Let's prepare then to vote on these remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Continue.
And for the record, the ordinance on item number 12 will be carried over one week to August 30th unless reconsidered with 12 members present. I apologize. There were 12 members for that vote.
All right, so then we're fine on that one.
Thank you.
Okay, so then, uh, let us, so where are we now? Items 22 through 30?
Correct. Items 22 through 30 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Mr. Paul Corretts?
29, please.
Item 29, we'll hold. You have cards? Please identify them.
Yes, there are cards on items 23, 25, 26, 29, and 30.
Okay, so let us, uh, hold those items and prepare to vote on the remaining items. Could you please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote?
12 ayes.
Okay, that brings us where?
Mr. President, that takes council back to items called special or general public comment.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Okay, what I want to do is ask Mr. Harris Dawson. Okay, Mr. Walsh, please come forward. You're going to get four minutes on agenda items and one minute on general public comment. Your first four minutes are to deal with the agenda items. Your last minute will deal with your public comment. So just identify your item and begin to speak out.
We'll say five minutes.
Wait, hold tight, Mr. Walsh. I have you on one nine, twenty-nine, thirty, and general public comment, so please go on.
You change the rules every meeting, and you don't pay your bills.
Just, okay.
Hollywood, Riley.
Mr. Walsh, last warning. Last warning, next time, you'll forfeit your time.
Uh, let's start with item one, and that is, uh, note of building and safety. You do a good job there. Number two is, uh, valley beach property, uh, streets and highway. This is a Venice beach property, BID. We don't need any more BIDs. All it does is raise the prices on the Venice Beach because every single business has and property owner has to pay it. And you get absolutely nothing for it. Okay, onsite consumption, Stanley's Wet Goods, again, the esteemed scumbags up here. All you do, again and again, is add more places to buy alcohol. That's why we're the number one hit-and-run victim place in America because you don't have to go more than ten feet, especially in minority neighborhoods. Where we Jews live, you don't find that many places to buy alcohol. Number nine is an easement for traffic signal purposes. Anytime you see the word easement, that means they're changing the rules for the developers. That's all it means. Number twenty-nine, and instantly after I'm finished speaking, you can all go home. Relative to establishing a city's position that would shift authority over taxi cabs from local governments to the PUC. I like this. It doesn't even tell you in the agenda, in the full agenda, what your position is. There's nothing more corrupt in this city than the taxi cabs, okay? And, uh, and, uh, oh, excuse me. That was true until they got surpassed by, uh, the new system where just about anybody can claim to be a taxicab, pick you up, and then rape you. And it doesn't matter whether you're a man or a woman, you'll get raped by the cab driver. Twenty-nine, and then thirty. This is an offer for reward information, conviction that the person is responsible for breaking into two apartments and assaulting, that means rape, two women on August 1st, 2016. And this, uh, $25,000. Rape is $25,000. You never... Show me one case where someone was raped and you put in a reward here and you paid out the reward. You never pay out the rewards because you don't do the job. And you don't do the job because, uh, you don't have enough cops. The cops aren't interested in protecting your home. They're interested in shooting down blacks and Hispanics. Go over here and you can find it out. Now, this is, uh, now I'm gonna go into my, uh, one minute of general public comment. Garcetti, yesterday, where was he? Doing his goddamn job? No. He was sucking, eating out Hillary Clinton at the fundraiser at Magic Johnson, a little of, and for a chaser, he sucked off Magic Johnson. I'm telling you right now, our mayor is not interested in running this. He wants to be a celebrity. He can't be a major celebrity because he's got a gay lover, Glenn Day, who's got working at MWD. So he can't be, ever go higher than he is now, or else he has to come out of the closet. And I don't think that Garcetti is going to be coming out of the closet anytime soon. Measure M. It used to be measure R, too. They changed the name of it because they did a survey and it did so poorly. What is that? That is the endless tax until the end of the planet. Half-cent sales tax forever. It means there will be no, uh, everything.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Walsh. Okay, if I can get Ms. Ramirez? Ms. Ramirez, please come forward. Wherever you are, Ms. Ramirez. Okay, so we'll do four minutes on her cards and then we'll set the clock for one minute for a general public comment. And please stay on subject. So Ms. Ramirez, identify the card that you're speaking on. I have you for items twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-nine, and general public comment.
So I get to choose what I want, right?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
No, from those cards I mentioned.
Which ones again, sir?
Items twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-nine.
Thank you very much. I'll start with public comments. Thank you very much.
No, you, public comment is last, so do your...
Do you mind if I go backwards? I'm sort of right now, my paperwork is...
Hold her time, because I don't want to take her time. Ms. Ramirez, start off with the cards.
Goddamn you motherfucker. This is what we go through, ladies and gentlemen. Last minute changes every time.
Stop, start the clock.
Yes. Again, I'm gonna start on number twenty-six. Item number twenty-six, why don't we have the corrupted, lazy-ass governor Jerry Brown pony up all the money, including his children's education money, and pay for all the fifty-plus million wetbacks and gangbangers? Let him take care of them, with their families, and many of them, and declare a state of emergency, and we then will use the funds for legal, law-abiding citizens. No wetbacks, no gangbangers. Again, um, do not pass this motion unless Jerry Brown will pony up and pay for all the wetbacks out of his own pocket, and these funds will exclusively go for the military veterans and all legal, law-abiding citizens. Again, no wetbacks and no gangbangers. Deportation at full throttle. And, uh, number twenty-nine, how will this benefit the prospective passengers, tourists, if you pass the regulatory authority over the taxi cabs from local government? Not that they are any better. Taxi, again, how do you, how is it that if you go from the local government to the PUC, how will that make or enhance the transportation for tourists and passengers? Will we be able to access taxi cabs quicker, have better resolutions, and not have to be hijacked by these taxi cabs? For instance, I have had to wait over ten hours for a goddamn taxi cab. Has any black had to wait for a taxi cab over ten hours? Again, taxi cab companies are a mess. They are in shambles.
Keep it down, keep your volume down.
So no regulatory agency, no local, state, or federal will do anything about these taxi cabs because they do not function according to the laws of the city or the state. Again, they run their own goddamn jihadi laws. So again, what we need is, we need to overhaul them, fire them all, and bring in American taxi cab drivers who know the laws of America, none of this jihadi shit. So again, these taxi cab drivers are rude, nasty, and they penny pinch, right to the penny. They never give you the exact change. Bunch of crooks. And the last one, public comments. We are under siege by these uncivilized, violent, domestic terrorists, racist, hate-mongering wetbacks, and chungo Latino gangbangers. They have greatly diminished the quality of life, mental health, welfare, and safety of all Angelinos.
She's on general public comment.
If we could hold her time, please?
Hold her time.
I truly understand the need for this person to comment upon the items before us on the agenda, but when I hear, continue to hear remarks that have nothing to do with the items before the agenda that just slander and call people names. I have reason to believe that she is not speaking on the item before us. The rules state that, excuse me, ma'am, you cannot disrupt this meeting.
Okay, please, please, please.
If you continue to disrupt this meeting, you'll be asked to leave. Thank you. Mr. President, I understand that we have rules that pertain to people's ability, right to speak before us, but I just hear a lot of other things that have nothing to do with items before the agenda. I would appreciate it if this person sticks to the item before us. Otherwise, we should ask her to stop speaking on these items. Thank you.
And I agree with you. And now she's on general public comment. No, wait, 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 wait. She is now on general public comment. Can you switch the clock to the one-minute general public comment?
We have rules. And again, these Latino pussies do not abide by the rules. They're bringing all the wetbacks and gangbangers and putting the middle-class America on the streets. Just because you're a wetback, Weezer, doesn't mean I am, okay? You're a pussy chupanaga.
She needs to direct her comments to the council.
No, no.
Thank you very much. God bless America. I am a law-abiding citizen, not you. And I have every right to speak on every item.
She needs to direct her comments to the council as a whole.
You need to direct your comments to us.
And again, ladies and gentlemen, the Music Center, Grand Park, Block Four, men's and females bathrooms on Spring Street has been hijacked by the wetbacks and the gangbangers. They plugged up the plumbing. They vandalized the tubings, the, uh, all the faucets, and vandalized and graffitied the Block Four Grand Park. And so it's closed, it's been closed since August the 15th. Again, they've damaged, vandalized all of the entire bathrooms that all the people are not able to use. Again, these are goddamn wetbacks like you, Weezer.
Thank you, your time has expired. Your time has expired. You're disrupting the meeting. And let me just say this to those of you that are in the audience. If you are offended by some of the things that you hear, then send us a card. Go on the record. Let us know. Send us a note. You're offended by some of these things. We would like to keep a record, so please speak out. So with that said, I'd like to now call Ms. McAllister. Ms. McAllister, I have you for item one, plus you can go on and do your, uh...
I'm on twenty-five also.
Okay, so why don't we give you your four minutes?
One twenty-five.
You do one and item twenty-five, and then we'll go into your general public comment. So just stay on the item and then we'll go to general. So it's your, the time is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I please will ask them to stop talking over us. That is very impolite. Item number one, I see we have thirty homes that are getting liens put on them. And as you know, I am for building affordable housing and for saving housing that we have. We don't need to be putting more people on the street. Now, many of these people don't know they even have liens on their houses. So we want to send letters out to them, asking them to come in here. Maybe they want to speak. Maybe somebody set them up. Because I've been hearing that the city is sending people... Please shut up over here.
Ms. McAllister, go ahead. I'll try to deal... Ms. McAllister, go ahead. Can we have some quiet, please? Go, Ms. McAllister, go right on.
I've been hearing that the city is sending spies out to people's homes, looking around the outside, and then writing up these complaints and having liens put on their homes. And then once you get to homes, your buddies buy them and give you kickbacks. So we want to make sure this is not happening to people. Every week I see about a hundred, hundred-and-twenty-five homes putting, with liens on them. So I am against this. Anybody with a lien, come down here to City Hall and get on this microphone and see what we can do for you. Also, there's something called the city's Handy Worker Program, which the city, these councilpeople tried to hide. You can get $5,000 to fix those liens. It's called the Handy Worker Program. Get down here, don't call, come down and visit your councilperson and ask about that $5,000. Now, on number twenty-seven, number twenty-seven is, uh, excuse me, number twenty-five is about declaring the state of emergency for the city of Los Angeles. When I say state of emergency, homeless state of emergency. I travel this city a lot, and what I see is $600,000 condominiums being built, one right on Eighth and Bixil. I see all kind of condominiums and high-income housing being built, and no affordable housing is being built. I wonder what's going on here? It's nothing but a game. Nothing but a game. We don't have any emergency. We have a lot of people who don't care about the people of the city, Mr. President. And I'm not saying you, because I know you're helping people over in your district. Also, um, I'd like to mention the fact that we need to get these illegal aliens out of affordable housing. When I drive around here and look at these tents, I see black people, white people. I don't see any Asians, and Asians are the second-largest illegal alien group. This is what the media reports in this nation, and especially in California, and I don't see any Mexicans. Those are the illegal workers, and they're being given the affordable housing. I don't think that is right. We need to do something about that. And I think that we get the right president in there, President Trump, we will run these illegal aliens out of this country. They have no business in affordable housing. I, um, am even for, we're using the military to get them out. If we have to shoot their rehens out of here, we need to do that.
No, 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 we don't want to do that.
Okay, now, you don't like violence, but this country is nothing but a violent nation, okay? We've got wars going on all over the world, killing people. So don't tell me you don't like violence, okay? Save that. Now, I'm still on my four minutes, right? Okay, now, I am particularly concerned about the Merd Park. There are people sleeping in the parks over there on the street where, and whites are...
But you gotta stay on the item, though, Ms. McAllister, and that's not...
Excuse me, turn on my mic.
No, 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 Ms. McAllister, relax and don't yell, please.
This is important.
Because you make, I know it is.
Turn off the clock, you talk...
Hold her time, hold her time, hold her time. But you, you, you gotta stay within, no hollering and screaming. So you have to stay on the item. So what item are you talking?
I'm still about twenty-five. You want to ask the governor to declare this is the city of Los Angeles state of emergency homelessness?
Go ahead.
We don't have it.
Go ahead.
The city has, the city has asked Lhasa to build, I read it now, I keep going with you guys. The city has asked Lhasa to build more, take some of these old, big builders and build, um, give them some shelters. We don't need no doggone shelters. We need affordable housing. Stop building all of these $600,000 condominiums and build some affordable housing. We don't need any shelters. Shelters mean you're still homeless. You are still homeless when you're in a shelter. And we need Lhasa investigated because I believe they're doing some money laundering and fraud over there and stealing.
Okay, give her her minute for general public comment.
My general public comment to the millions of people who listen to me and ask me as I walk down the street, when I'm coming back to City Hall, we have some, uh, we have a large, a very dangerous, I say fraudulent, Los Angeles Unified School District. I am a former teacher. I'm a computer scientist and a math teacher. And millions of dollars, I say billions, are being stolen from teachers, not just from their salaries, but from their retirements. Now, I have proof that this is going on, and we have an office of administrative hearing set for October the 20th, that's on a Thursday, at 320 West Fourth Street, Suite 630, Los Angeles 90013, 8:30 in the morning. Like I said, I'm a computer programmer. I have the code. I have the specifications proving that they are scamming and taking money illegally, and we want to send some people to prison if we can. But I have the proof that they are turning off switches to reduce teacher retirement funds and sticking it in their doggone pockets. We're gonna get you eventually, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So now we want to move to item seven. If I could have Ms. Elizabeth Peterson, Bill Watkins?
Good morning, council members. Council President, Elizabeth Peterson, applicant's representative. This establishment is a new thirty-three-seat, 2,331-square-foot gourmet bottle shop and tasting bar, having twelve outdoor seats on a 168-square-foot patio, with hours of operation from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Sunday through Thursday, and 10:00 a.m. to midnight, Friday and Saturday. The applicant, Stanley's Wet Goods, named after the owner, John Stanley. John Stanley is making a transition from a fifteen-year career in the aerospace industry back to small business and his roots as a business owner. John has spent the last twelve years becoming expert on wine and beer and the study and education of wine and beer. This location is one of LA's great boulevards that carries a multitude of bus, car, bicycle, and pedestrian traffic. The building is located one block from downtown Culver City Civic Center, which is characterized as dining, commercial, entertainment, and residential uses, and is well-served by public transit, the Metress Line, local bus services, and the Culver City Municipal Services. There are two very large parking structures right here, and the sale of alcoholic beverages and small tastings adjacent to downtown Culver City along Venice Boulevard consist and appropriate with the surrounding area. consists and appropriate with the surrounding areas. We've worked very hard with Councilmember's Office, Paul Coretts. We presented to the Neighbourhood Council full board and had full support. We work very closely with the Police Department. It is a very small business with a dedicated business owner, and we would respectfully request your support. Thank you.
Thank you. So Mr. Watkins.
And one for public comment, be one and one?
No, at this point, uh...
Just do seven.
On this item.
Just do seven. Hi, Bill Watkins here. Um, I, I'm okay, you're gonna vote yes for Stanley's. I'm okay with it. If not this time around, maybe next time. I hope the city council, uh, puts something in about advertising of alcohol, and we just are careful how we advertise places of this nature and anywhere that's serving alcohol. And we respect the fact that there are alcoholics in recovery who shouldn't see those ads, and we respect that there are children and children in these neighborhoods who shouldn't see advertising for alcohol, ever. Uh, more than that, on public comment, I'm gonna move along, you're gonna vote yes, but be careful of advertising, please, Stanley's.
Okay, wait, you know what, Mr. Watkins, go on and do your... Could you give him one minute for his general public, uh, comment? Okay, go ahead, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. Just fine. I appreciate it. To that, I'll just add, uh, to anyone listening, there we go, I got a Mr. Coretts, maybe someone, Mr. O'Farrell. I don't have many today. Mr. Weesar, I'd like, uh, just 30 seconds here. Let's help with advertising with alcohol.
Hold his time. Ms. Ramirez, please sit down. You're not supposed, we'll get it for you afterwards. Yes, sir, go on, Ms. Watkins.
Thank you. Mr. Weesar and everybody, if we can work on alcohol advertising, billboard advertising, reshape it, look at it again. I'm an alcoholic. I'm 14 years sober, thanks to God. I worked really hard on that. I have alcohol being advertised and pitched and pushed at me all the time. I'm on Figueroa, I got a Bud Light party, I got Dos Equis. I can't get away from alcohol, even though it's good for me, it's good for my life, it's good for my family. I could say the same for children walking around. We should not have these alcohol ads. We, we crushed cigarette ads in 1970 as a nation. Why can't we get into, to alcohol? I'm not talking prohibition, I'm talking about stop pitching and pushing alcohol at me, I'm a drunk. I'm a drunk. I'm a drunk. Thank you.
And congratulations, Mr. Watkins, on your sobriety. Ms. Ramirez, get whatever it is that you need. Members, let us prepare to vote on item seven. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, now we're gonna move to item 25. Maria Sanchez, Marie Rumsey, and Ruth Swartz, I believe it is, please come forward. When I call your name, please come forward.
Hi, my name is Maria Sanchez, and I'm the policy coordinator at Southern California Association for Nonprofit Housing, SCAM. SCAM is a member organization. Our members provide housing for those with those, the greatest needs in the city of Los Angeles. I want to thank the council for its leadership on homelessness. I am here to respectfully request for LA City Council to urge the governor to declare a state of emergency. Due to the increased number of homeless persons in the city of LA, the Greatest LA Homeless Count shows that within the past year alone, LA City has shown an increase of homeless from over 25,000 in 2015 to over 28,000 in 2016. The state numbers are similarly alarming. In 2015, with over 115,000 homeless persons, California accounted for 21% of the nation's homeless population. The tremendous scale of homelessness in the, in Los Angeles threatens the economic stability of the region by burdening emergency medical services and social service infrastructure. SCAM urges you to support this motion today.
Thank you. So Marie, come forward, good to see you.
Good to see you too. Good morning, my name is Marie Rumsey. I'm here on behalf of the Central City Association, and I'm here to thank you for this resolution asking the state to declare a state of emergency regarding homelessness. I think it's important when we talk about state of emergencies, we realize that they're not only used for natural disasters. In 2006, the governor declared a state of emergency regarding prison overcrowding, which was also a dire situation, much like homelessness. Again, thank you for your urgency and action today.
Thank you. Ms. Swartz, please come forward.
Thank you. Um, I'm here also to support, um, a declaration of a state of emergency. If there's anywhere we have an emergency on homelessness, it's LA City. With the increasing numbers of people and people without shelter, um, it's bad for them, it's bad for the community. I urge you to support the state assembly and state, uh, measures and hope that, um, by doing so, more resources may come to Los Angeles, and the governor may recognize an emergency that's been festering during his service to the state this last time. Thank you.
Thank you. So members, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, let's take up item nine. Uh, there's no speakers, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Mr. Bonin, I want to defer to you. Item 29.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, we have before us today a recommendation to oppose a piece of state legislation, AB 650, which, uh, proposed by Assemblyman Evan Low, is called the Taxi Cab Transportation Services Act. It, uh, sounds good on the surface. It sounds like it would level the playing field and help better regulate the taxi industry. It is actually, in reality, a disastrous piece of legislation that would be horrible for the city of Los Angeles, for taxi passengers in Los Angeles, uh, and, um, uh, for mobility in Los Angeles. Let me tell you a few of the things this bill would do. This bill would, uh, essentially strip Los Angeles of its regulatory authority over the taxi cab industry. It would strip that authority and return it to the state. It would leave us, however, with the responsibility for enforcement. So what would happen is we would lose the $2 million a year that we get in franchise fees, and we would lose the money that would pay for and fund the staff that we have that does all of our taxi cab enforcement. It would cause us to, uh, lose the $800,000 a year that we get for our Bandit Taxi Cab Enforcement Program, and would leave us with no resources to do that. It would essentially, uh, take what is a funded program in Los Angeles, give us a mandate to enforce a series of rules, and give us no funds or no ability to change those rules. In Los Angeles, we have enacted, over the past couple decades, over 300 rules and regulations enacted by the Taxi Cab Commission to solve problems here in Los Angeles. Here are a few of them that would be undone by AB 650. One of them is that it would undo a lot of our rules that prevent redlining. Here in Los Angeles, because of our taxi cab rules, because of the rules that, that this body and this city have put in place, we require service to South Los Angeles. Those rules would be eliminated if this law were passed. Right now, because of our rules, a resident of South Los Angeles spends one-third less time waiting for a taxi than Sheer He did 10 years ago. That rule, gone. AB 650 would make it a lot more difficult for someone in a wheelchair to hail a cab. We require here in Los Angeles that a certain percentage of the cabs, I think 10%, uh, be equipped to carry wheelchairs. And that rule would also be eliminated. There would be no provision left to protect that. It would also expose passengers to the risk of unfair pricing. Different companies could set different prices, and if you were hailing a cab, you would have no idea of what sort of price you were getting when that cab was coming. It would also, uh, uh, create a system where Bandit Taxi Cabs return to Los Angeles, where we have all sorts of problems, and consumers essentially would get screwed by this. It is bad for Los Angeles. It takes away local control, uh, and the consequences are pretty severe. So, uh, along with Mayor Garcetti and a number of members of this body, Mr. Krikorian, Mr. Harris Dawson, Mr. Weston, we've individually been urging the legislature not to approve this bill, and we ask this body to, uh, collectively make that statement, uh, in opposition to AB 650. And, uh, our general manager, Selita Reynolds, is here, uh, in support of this position to oppose the bill and is available to answer any questions if anybody has them.
Okay, before we go there, I have one card that I neglected or misplaced. Daniel Klein, please come forward. Mr. Klein, Daniel Klein.
Thank you, Mr. President. May I yield my time to Mr. Evans, who has a card as well?
Well, we can't yield time, but if he wants to speak, I'll give him his time.
I would like to, thank you. Uh, honorable members of the city council, my name is Neil Evans. I'm an attorney, and I represent a number of taxi companies in the city of Los Angeles. I also have spoken in Sacramento before a committee on this issue a couple of weeks ago. We don't see any real value to taking away existing franchises, taking away existing operations that have been here since the 70s, and replacing it for an unknown, uh, form of regulation that may not exist. We don't necessarily have a problem with the idea of having some kind of uniform licenser for taxi drivers. We definitely want there to be fingerprinting and all sorts of regulations to taxi drivers. But in terms of the operations of the cab companies itself, what we perceive happening if this bill passes is that anybody can drive a cab, uh, as long as they can fill out a form with the, uh, the equivalent of the PUC, and there's not going to be any regulation whatsoever. The PUC, as it stands right now, was supposed to regulate transportation, does a horrible job of it. We're now going to say, uh, we're gonna have a, a state license scheme with no regulation, no controls, and eliminate franchises and, and companies that have been doing a great job of serving the city for many, many years. It is very, uh, ill-conceived, uh, the bottom line is, what will happen is that there'll be anarchy, and the public will not benefit from it. We perceive that this bill has been proposed in order to gain advantages for some larger operators who think they can operate some kind of a, uh, fee-for-service operation, but it does nothing for the benefit of, protection of the public. So we strongly urge you to oppose, in any way that you can, this bill, and make it known that the city of Los Angeles wants to have a reasonable form of taxi operation. Again, we don't necessarily oppose some kind of state regulation of drivers on a mass basis, which may actually be better in terms of fingerprinting, regulation, and those sorts of things. Thank you very much.
Okay, with that said, uh, Ms. Reynolds, why don't we bring you to the table? And then I'm gonna call the members, but I want, it's good to see you. Have a seat, make yourself comfortable. And I'm gonna start off with Mr. Paul Coretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I'm not entirely sure what to do with this bill. I think it has a lot of flaws, but so does the current system. And most of the arguments against it, I think, are kind of silly. I mean, we, yes, we lose mandating wheelchair access. So the current system, where we have $60 billion-backed, uh, rideshare companies that have no obligation to do wheelchairs, we saddle the cost of subsidizing wheelchairs with the taxi companies, which are a slowly dying industry, because one group has all the regulations, the other one doesn't. Um, I don't want to see people without wheelchairs either. I just want to see everybody have the same obligations. So if I felt we were moving in that direction somehow, and we were seeking the ability to regulate both Uber and Lyft and taxis, and try to come up with something equitable, I would be happy to oppose this. I think this goes in the wrong direction in some ways. A lot of those taxi regulations are there for a reason. Uh, a minimum charge, for instance, is there, so you don't have a race to the bottom. Uber and Lyft, uh, we've agreed to happily allow a race to the bottom. But if they're going to do it, why do we keep ours uncompetitive? Why can't we take some steps to, to even that field as a second choice? I, I, I'm not sure whether this is a, a better circumstance or not. It's really a hard call. We know the state doesn't do a very good job, at least so far, in, in regulating, uh, Uber and Lyft that they're in charge of and, and, uh, doing that enforcement. And considering I consider them banded cabs with apps anyway, if you have some more banded cabs, I'm not sure we see a, a massive difference there either. The question is, is there something that we can do proactively in its place to try and level the playing field, try to strengthen some of the regulations that would provide more safety on the other TNCs? Where do we go? If we don't support this, there's gotta be something better that's an endgame. So where, where are we looking? What are we hoping to do?
So excellent points and, and a great question. I would start by just, uh, mapping out the steps that the Taxi Commission has taken, um, to lighten the regulatory load on the cab companies. And in fact, when I started, uh, two years ago, one of the very first agenda items we had before the Taxi Commission was a proposal to substantially deregulate taxi cabs in a way that would allow them to do dynamic fare setting, similar to Uber and Lyft, and compete on an economic basis. Also, perhaps, remove the cap on the number of taxi cabs in the city of Los Angeles. At that time, the cab companies were uniformly opposed, but in the intervening years, we have taken many steps to ease the regulation. So, uh, just a couple of months ago, we lowered significantly the franchise fees to the maximum extent that we could at the Taxi Commission, and we created, uh, a program for cab companies to opt into that would allow them to lower their fees further. We had an initial vote on an expansion of the, the hail-a-cab program to be citywide, so that cab companies could, uh, pick up and drop off street hails, which is the advantage that they have over TNCs, citywide, without fear of getting parking tickets or other kinds of enforcement. And then, uh, one of the, the most recent things before the, the Taxi Commission is a proposal to have, uh, the cab companies be allowed to do, um, fare setting and offer discounts if they are picking up a ride that was hailed via an app. So we're doing everything that we can, and we think there are a lot more things that we could do, to make sure that the cab companies have the same tools as the TNCs. And so far, we've been very successful, and we've had the support of the cab companies in pushing those deregulations forward. So I believe that there are ways to achieve a lot of the outcomes that this bill is aiming for without completely letting go of local control. The last thing I'll note that we're doing on sort of, uh, um, outside of the Taxi Commission is working closely with the cities of Santa Monica and West Hollywood to set up a reciprocity agreement, so that our drivers can pick up and drop off in their cities and vice versa. And we're hoping that Glendale and Burbank will sign on, and then many of the other, um, smaller cities in Los Angeles County as well, which would eliminate probably one of the biggest complaints from drivers and the companies, which is that, um, they have to do a lot of one-way trips because of the sort of spider web of regulations that we have. So we completely agree that the regulations need to be rationalized at a county level, because that's how people get around. But we think there are ways to get there and things that we can do to accomplish that without, uh, letting go of all of the other benefits that we get by being able to regulate these companies. The last thing I'll just note is that, um, we did a deep dive on the legislation that enables, uh, transportation network companies like Uber and Lyft, um, across the United States. And in many states, the largest cities in those states have a carve-out. So the state does the regulation, uh, statewide, but then in the largest cities, uh, like New York, uh, the, the city itself maintains control. I think we've seen, in just a few months of service at the airport, that there are ways that, uh, regulatory agencies and TNCs can work together to mutual benefit. They have generated a significant amount of revenue that can go back into transportation improvements at the airport. Um, and there's no reason why, um, the city and, and this body in particular could begin to contemplate, um, what some kind of a carve-out might look like, uh, for TNCs as well.
Okay, so Mr. Coretts, I'll press your button again, because you're over. So if I can get Mr. Krikorian?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Ms. Reynolds. And thank you for the steps that you've taken to try to even the playing field a little bit here. Because, uh, members, I'm gonna rise, uh, in support of this resolution, but I do it with great trepidation and with great reluctance. Because everything that Mr. Bonin said, um, about what is going to happen if this bill, uh, passes is exactly what is happening already. And we are reap, with this bill, we are reaping what we have sown as a society. With our sense of urgency in rolling out the red carpet for the next disruptive technology, we have dismantled every reasonable regulation of transportation in order to allow Uber to become one of the richest companies in the country. We have taken away, uh, the guarantees, uh, that people in disadvantaged neighborhoods have, that they will have transportation available to them.
they will have transportation available to them. We've taken away access for the disabled. We've taken away the kind of price regulation that Mr. Coretts described. We have taken all of that away. And I understand perfectly why the taxi cab industry and the drivers, who are trying to put food on the table for their families, would sponsor this legislation to try to save what's left of their industry that's been ravaged by this policy dismantling that we've been doing, a public policy that's important to the public. The most recent version of this bill, with its most recent amendments, takes out any requirement for live-scan background checks for cabs. So every argument that you've heard me make about why TNCs are less safe than cabs because they don't do live-scanning, well, our solution is to make everybody less safe, then. Let's even the playing field by making everyone less safe. So that's why I'm standing in opposition to this bill. What Assemblymember Lowe ought to do, instead of bringing taxi cabs under the PUC's jurisdiction, is take TNCs out of the PUC's jurisdiction and let us do the regulation that we know how to do, that we've done, and that we've been elected by the people to do. That would be my solution to this problem. But because that solution isn't on the table, I have no choice but to stand and rise in opposition to what would be a takeaway of local control in an industry that I think we can do a better job of. Ms. Reynolds has talked about some of the steps we're taking. We need to do more. We need to do much more to protect the public and protect the people who are making a living for their families, pushing a cab across this city for 12 hours at a time. We need to do a better job for them, but unfortunately, I've concluded that this bill is not the way to go.
Thank you, Mr. Krikorian. No, 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 nothing from the public. Mr. O'Farrell. No, 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 let's keep it. Sir, 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 you're disrupting the meeting. Please stop, or I have to ask you to leave. Relax, let us have this conversation. Okay, Mr. O'Farrell, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Colleagues, I have a lot of concerns. I feel very strongly that, over the years, and since I've been on this council for three years and nearly two months, at the state and local level, we have basically added to the downfall of the taxi cab industry due to our own inaction, and I think that's inherently unfair. And what I would rather see us doing is lobbying Sacramento to make sure that LA has that carve-out, so we can regulate TNCs. I don't see any action in that direction, though. That frustrates me greatly that we come to this moment. I spoke with Evan Lowe on Friday, had a long conversation about why this bill, why the, you know, the loss of local control for Los Angeles, which concerns me greatly, like it does everyone else. And over a period of months, they crafted this bill with taxi cab companies, because there is a belief, and it's not universal, clearly, through the letters and some of the testimony today, that this is really one of the last chances to save the industry because of local inaction. Mr. Bonin said it himself. Over 300 rules and regulations for our taxi cab companies over the decades, with zero rules and regulations for TNCs, which has just accommodated their success, we're adding to their profit margins, and will probably contribute greatly when they do an IPO. And I would ask that we think differently about this, lobby Sacramento, and try to get that local control. I will also say that Evan Lowe's office mentioned that in June, they contacted LEDOT to work with our local transit department on modifying, making recommendations that are of concern to Los Angeles. Their position is that they never heard back. That's just their position. I'm not saying that's a fact, I wasn't there, but that raises a concern for me as well, when I can just pick up the phone and call Evan. We are so deeply regulated in taxi cab industry. I don't know if any of my colleagues, probably you have. I've spoken with taxi cabs, cab operators, I've spoken with the organizations. I've seen how they are going bankrupt, how they're having to reevaluate even staying in the industry, when they own their own cars as well, and have abided by these 300 rules and regulations their entire career. And so I would challenge all of us on what we can do to get local control for the TNCs and keep moving in the direction of deregulation only where it makes sense for taxi cab companies, because they are profoundly not on a level playing field. And if we don't work toward getting them on a level playing field, we are participating even further in their downfall. And I think that's unacceptable, and I think the general-going public should pressure us to make sure that doesn't happen. Lastly, just, colleagues, let's stop looking the other way every time something comes our way that further supports and furthers the success of TNCs. I have nothing against them whatsoever. I use Uber occasionally. I use a taxi occasionally. But it is our job to make sure that we provide a level playing field, and that we provide equity and an opportunity for everyone who plays by the rules. And how can they do that if the rules are inherently unequal? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Let's keep it, please, let's keep it down. Ms. Martinez. Please, please, don't disrupt the meeting. Ms. Martinez.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. So I've given this a lot of thought, and I've concluded that I'm going to support AB 650. I actually think it's hypocrisy that, in the past, we've argued around whether we should maintain local control over these types of issues, and the majority of this council disagreed with me, and with a few of us, and believed that the PUC would be better off than us controlling this particular industry. And I find it incredibly hypocritical that, now that it's affecting our pocketbooks, that now we find the need to control the taxi industry at the local level. We didn't feel the same way about the TNCs, and I just, that just doesn't sit okay with me. This notion of the shared economy, because you want to be hip, and you want to get on your phones, and download an app, and call a car to pick you up, or rent a house somewhere. I mean, ultimately, I think this hurts working people. This ultimately does affect the very fabric of the people that we stand up here and talk about protecting, when we talk about increasing the minimum wage, when we talk about protecting hotel workers. This shared economy makes money for a very few people, but ultimately destroys industries. And if we want to level the playing field for this industry, then we need to do what's right and allow them to be regulated by the state, because we've done such a terrible job. I think there's a collective effort to try to destroy this industry. People, 60-year-old men, 70-year-old men, have worked their entire lives to drive a taxi for 12, 14 hours a day. Some of them have invested their entire life savings to purchase a taxi, that all of a sudden, because it's hip and cool, and we can save a couple of bucks by calling a private car to pick us up, we're going to destroy an entire industry? That's never sat well with me. And now that they're finally trying to figure out a way to level the playing field for themselves, all of a sudden, the city of Los Angeles is saying to them, wait, we want local control. Well, why weren't we saying that to the TNCs when we had that very issue before us? It's hypocritical, it's not okay, and there's flaws in the bill, but I just don't know what else to do for this particular industry, this group of people that have worked their entire lives to make ends meet.
Okay, let's keep it down. Mr. Harris-Dawson. Please, who is that? Is it?
Disrupting this meeting since the time she left the podium, Mr. President.
Okay, Ms. Ramirez?
I think it's time for her to leave.
This is, Sergeant, would you please remove Ms. Ramirez? Ms. Ramirez, Sergeants, she is continuing to disrupt the meeting.
She continues to disrupt the meeting, is yelling out from the chamber.
And so, she is being removed by the Sergeants. She's being removed by the Sergeants. She has been warned on more than numerous occasions. We have a lot of work to do. And so, let's remove Ms. Ramirez, who Mr. City Attorney is continuing, continuing to disrupt this meeting. Note, note. Thank you. All right, she has been removed. And again, Mr. City Attorney, let's make a note that that was Ms. Antonio Ramirez, again, interrupting our meeting. So with that said, I want to go to Mr. Harris.
Going to pass, Mr. President.
Okay, so I'm gonna, we're gonna make our second pass, so I'm gonna go to Mr. Coretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this leaves me still trying to figure out what to do. I mean, I agree, this is an absolute hail mary. It does almost as much harm as it does good. It's not a good proposal, but it is what we have on the table, which is a desperation effort to save an industry that has rather intentionally been decimated. What the ideal would be is something that we've had a little bit of discussion among some taxi cab folks and commissioners, which would be if we could carve out a county or two, LA County, maybe LA and Orange County, and have our own regulatory body that dealt with TNCs and taxis, and dealt with them in an equitable fashion that we all chose. If I got a sense that the majority of the council had interest in actually leveling that playing field and making that happen, I would probably oppose this bill, because I think if there was a better plan, this is certainly not a very good one. But if we don't hear that kind of commitment from folks that still aren't recognizing that there are safety issues, and there are competitive issues, and there, as Ms. Martinez said, an industry with families to be fed, which is not always the case of TNCs, I mean, half my daughter's friends at one time or another, I think, have driven for them, and it's generally just for a little extra cash. It's a very different circumstance for the people that actually work in those cars, and soon may not even have those jobs if the TNCs are successful in eliminating the drivers. So it's sort of a question of where our will is. Do we actually want to even the playing field? Do we actually want to say everybody should have wheelchair pickup? Everybody should pick up everywhere? All the things that we're asking of taxi cabs that are good things, should not everybody be doing that? If we have some interest in getting there, then I think we should oppose this legislation, because it is severely flawed, it's not nearly where we want to be. But if we do have some interest, let's suggest that we would support it if amended to carve us out as far as regulating all those transportation providers.
Mr. Bloomingfield.
I support that motion to amend it, to say we'll support it when they, I mean, we oppose the bill, but we would support it if they carve out Los Angeles. A note for the record, San Francisco is carved out of this bill, so why not have Los Angeles be carved out of this bill? You know, we had this TNC discussion in the past about the airport. We've never had the discussion about our collective will in terms of regulating. I would love to see a larger LA region where we can regulate TNCs and taxi cabs. I just want to remind everyone here that it wasn't us who gave up that right, that was something that the courts determined. And then we had a question about what we do with the PUC, with the TNCs at the airport, and we had disagreements over that, but that was a very discreet question on what we do at the airport, given the current rulings by the courts. But that is a different question than the overall question of regulating. So I support the motion on the table. I'm concerned about the losses that Mr. Bonin discussed. I would happily support Mr. Coretts's amendment to oppose, unless amended, to carve out Los, you know, the greater Los Angeles region. I think that's a nice compromise. You know, and ultimately, I mean, there's, this is more complex than any of us are making it out to be. I mean, I'm just, I haven't studied it that much, but just looking at some of it, they do authorize cities to choose to oversee curbside pickups, to regulate those activities. So there's more nuance to this bill. I wish we had more time to actually work with them, and that the Department of Transportation had time to work with them to come up with something. But in its current form, I support the motion to oppose it, but I would also support a motion to oppose it unless amended to carve out Los Angeles.
Thank you.
And I'll make that motion so you can second it.
Mr. Krikorian.
I agree with that motion, because I certainly join in it as well. And I want to say that I agree with every single thing that Ms. Martinez said about the problems that have developed because of the PUC's usurpation of local control of TNCs, and the fact that we have absolutely no ability now to control the latest disruptive industry, and in this case, disruption has meant dismantling of every important public policy that we've imposed, whether it's dealing with driver safety, driver welfare, public safety and background checks, environmental concerns that we've imposed here in Los Angeles on our cab companies, access to the disabled, all of those things were stripped away from us by the single action of the PUC having preemptive effect over our regulation of the TNCs. And unless we go back to an arena where we have control over those things, that disruptive technology will just disrupt us right out of our role as regulators. And that's basically what is happening right now. So I think that what has been proposed of opposing this bill, and by the way, I mentioned that this bill, in its original form, it did provide that the taxi cabs would still have live-scan background checks. But because of lobbying in Sacramento, and I wonder who could be responsible for that lobbying, because of lobbying in Sacramento, that provision was stricken out. Because if the PUC is regulating both the cab industry, which has legitimate background checks, and the TNC industry, which has illegitimate background checks, how is that going to make the TNCs look? So that was stricken out, because God forbid we should ever, you know, actually raise that debate in front of the PUC. So I think this is, look, this bill is not a good bill. But the reason that we are faced with this is because of our failure as a state, as a nation, probably globally, to regulate this rush to the latest, coolest, newest disruptive technology, completely abandoning our public safety and policymaking role. And that's where it leaves us. So if we can come out of this with an opposed position, unless amended, so that we can actually do that work that we're elected to do, and that we hire people to do in our Department of Transportation, then I would be very supportive of that, and I think it would be a good step forward.
Mr. Bonin, to close.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you, colleagues, for the spirited debate. Mr. Krikorian and I, on this subject, often come out in different places, but on this one, while our thinking may be different, we come to the same place and to the same conclusion on this one. You know, there is a difference, and an unfair difference, between how the TNCs are regulated and how the taxi cab industry is regulated. I totally agree with that. And I think that the PUC has done a pretty poor job regulating the TNCs. And I think the question before us with this bill is acknowledging that, do we, A, race to the bottom and eliminate all the good things that we have done with our local regulatory power over taxis, or do we try to find a different way to race to the top and find ways to have greater authority over the TNCs? And I think the PUC has done, as I said, a bad job, and I would be supportive of ways to have more authority over the TNCs here in Los Angeles, or have a different way of governing them through the state. But for us to race to the bottom by supporting this bill would be bad. And I don't think it's silly at all to be trying to prevent redlining, or silly at all to be trying to stand up for people who need wheelchairs. We have some good rules in place, and we shouldn't do anything that gets rid of them. We should find ways to get rules in place for the TNCs that have similar protections. So I would support the amendment on the floor, which would have us oppose unless the city of Los Angeles is carved out. I think that makes a lot of sense. I think that makes a lot of sense. So I would be in favor of that amendment, Mr. President.
Madam Clerk, so in order to move forward with that, Mr. Bloomingfield?
Just to clarify, so that we don't run into a legal problem on the amendment, the amendment should be opposed unless cities of more than a million people that have robust regulations are exempted. Because if we, if we specifically name Los Angeles, they won't be able to put it in verbatim, but it'll have the same effect.
Okay, so what is the, the approach that we take to move forward? Incorporating the amendment?
We can take one vote on the item as amended, and the amendment would be to oppose unless amended to include a carve out for cities or counties with a population of over 1 million that already have regulations in place.
Okay, so with that said, members, let's prepare to vote. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Whoa, whoa, whoa. Yes, the city attorney's trying to.
The, the council should first vote on, on the amendment, and then, if that passes, then vote on it as amended.
Well, I don't quite understand that, but we'll do what you said, Mr. City Attorney. Okay, let's vote on the amendment now. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
And now let's vote on the issue. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you.
And for clarification, that is as amended.
Thank you. Ms. Martinez, you put a hold on item 18. Are you ready to move forward on that?
Yes, yes. Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, before us is the approval of more resources for the Homeless Outreach Partnership Endeavor Teams, also known as the HOPE Teams, that have been doing a great job in my district. Earlier this year, working with the mayor's office, we launched the pilot program to study how HOPE Teams would actually work in action, particularly in the valley, and the HOPE Teams provide more resources for sanitation in LSA to be dedicated to clearing some of these larger encampments in our city, and the pilot program was actually tested in my district. To date, we have, have a couple of statistics. Since May, the HOPE Teams have conducted 140 cleanups, have made 204 referrals to services, have gotten almost 38 individuals some sort of housing. One of the examples of this was a young woman that we met. Her name was Avis. After establishing a relationship with her, we were able to, to notify her daughter, who lived in Sarvino, that her mom had been homeless for quite some time, were able to reunify them, and she was able to go back home and live with her daughter. These are just examples of what the HOPE Team actually goes and the services that it provides, beginning with developing relationships with some of these folks, figuring out what kind, assessing them and figuring out what kind of services they're going to need. In my district, it's been incredibly successful. I think it's the right step in the right direction to not only deal with some of the safety issues and concerns that some of our neighbors have brought up, and making sure some of these areas are cleaned up in a, in a timely manner, but also to be able to connect individuals with services that hopefully will get them off the street. So the HOPE Teams in my district has, have been very successful. We hope to expand them to other parts of the city and provide additional resources for this. I understand there's other members on the council who, who's visited my district and actually have gone out with the HOPE Teams and figured out how it all works, how all these different departments come together with sanitation, LSA, LAPD in my office, and I believe a lot of them have been pretty impressed with the outcome. So I just wanted to point out, I want to call you Captain Chamberlain, but I know you have a different title. Commander Chamberlain, can you please stand, sir? I call him captain because he was my captain at Mission Division, and he is now the first, the commander in charge of our home team, our HOPE Teams, and I want to give him a huge round of applause. Please stand up, Commander Chamberlain, along with his entire team. Thank you very much, sir. You've done an outstanding job, and I just ask colleagues to continue to support this. I asked for an I-vote, so that we can expand the resources and get them into additional districts in the city.
Thank you. Mr. Buscayeno?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, to rise in support of, of this item before us, and, and thank your partnership, Ms. Martinez, and others in the council, who listen to the community's concern about quality of life issues, and the departments from sanitation and LAPD that have been so responsive, and also our community-based organizations as well, LSA, specifically in my district, that these cleanups have allowed them to outreach and provide referrals and housing and a number of vouchers for these individuals that have needed the, the, the love and the support necessary to get back on their feet. A true case for us and the success of collaborating with our community-based organizations and the police department and sanitation is downtown San Pedro today, where it's a complete turnaround, where we have now passable sidewalks. We have seen, we, we no longer see sidewalks blocked and encampments where a number of individuals have been taken advantage because of being homeless with drug abuse, and we've seen a reduction of violent crime, of domestic violence and, and, and drug abuse because of the, the collaboration between all necessary resources. So I'm happy to see this move forward, and most importantly, to see the four bureaus established, where we can bring more accountability and be more responsive, and most importantly, help those that need the most help living on our streets today. So happy to see this move forward quickly and swiftly, and that was the, the, the promise made by the mayor's office, by our team here before us, and by this council. So thank you very much, and hoping to continue our partnership, and most importantly, bring those resources needed to those folks living on our streets today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, we want to bring an item back that we voted on Friday, so we want to reconsider. It was item 10 from Friday's agenda. The file was CF001408S1, was regarding a nonprofit lease with Scope, which is located at 1715 West Florence Avenue. I'd now like to acknowledge Mr. Harris-Dawson.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I would ask the members to reconsider this matter and know that it's for the purposes for me to recuse myself on this matter, as I have a familial financial conflict.
Okay, so why don't we take you off the board? You can exit the chambers. So the first vote, Madam Clerk, would be on reconsideration, correct? So let us take him off the board. Let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, now we can actually vote on the item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote. Okay, now let's move to item 30. Let us prepare to vote on this item. This, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Mr. Corretts, it's my understanding that you'd like to present someone to this body?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to introduce two distinguished guests from Taiwan, Republic of China, this morning. Mayor Laura She of Doleo City and Director Cindy Shen of Picture Book Library of Doleo City. Doleo is a city in the southern part of Taiwan with approximately 100,000 residents. Uniquely, a small city like this has Taiwan's first picture book library that provides picture books from all over the world for young children and their parents. The library submitted a poster proposal for the International Federation of Library Association, which had its 2016 annual conference in Columbus, Ohio last week, and Laura and Cindy had the opportunity to prevent their "Love Travel and Bring Home a Picture Book From Your Journey" poster, and it was a big hit there at the conference, and I congratulate them for their achievement. Welcome to our city and look forward to a good, long relationship in the future. And so if I could, if I could have the mayor say a few words, that would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. It's more than happy to be here. I would like to say, I would like to express my heartiest expression, appreciation to all of you, especially the President Wilson and Councilor Moretz. Actually, this is the first time I come to, come to Los Angeles, and I learned lots of it, you know? So I'm very impressive with the democracy and your higher education, multicultural science, technology, and international trade. Okay, so it, it's a wonderful, and it's a beautiful city. Los Angeles is a great city. I love it. And I would like to share with you, there is a special, a simple program, as Councilors say, this is a program we called, it's Love Traveling, Love Reading, Bring Back a Picture Book From Your Journey. Why? What's the reason why to bring a book, or no, a picture book, for children? As we think reading is very, very important for everyone, especially for the kids, and picture books has more pictures, less words. So we think this is the best choice for children, for kids to read. So through this program, we collect many, many picture books from all over the world, and we strongly encourage the parents to come to the library with their kids, to study together, to enjoy reading. As you know, reading makes a difference for everyone, especially for the kids. We are used to be a child, and our child will be grow up someday, so that's, we would like to invite you to, to join this program, to bring back a book, a picture book for children. One book means one love. Thank you very much, and welcome to Taiwan someday. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if I can, I'd like to present the certificate to her.
Go right ahead, Mr. Corretts. Okay. Let's show Mr. Corretts. Okay, now we're gonna move to item 23. Mr. Bloomingfield? Item 23.
Yes, I'd like to make a, a very minor amendment to this, per the department's request. This is a resolution, and in the last paragraph where it says, "Support for HR 4615 and similar legislation," to add in the words "or administrative action." Per the, and I think this is a, a very perfunctory and would urge support for the amendment.
All right, so let's prepare to vote on this as amended. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Let's now move to item 26. Let's, uh...
For clarification, on item 23, the vote is actually 11 ayes, as amended.
Okay, so now we're gonna go to item 26. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
And now we're gonna quickly move to item 1. Ms. Maria Rodriguez, Richard, Richard Long, Joe and Brenda Serna, Fay Nahad, and I think it's a Nelson, Fosby Nelson. So anyway, please, if I've called your name, come forward. Don't, no particular order. If you've heard your name, please come forward and just identify yourself.
And, Mr. President, as the speakers come forward, there are requests to continue three of the items. That would be 1M, 1N, and 1AA, and the request is to continue for three weeks to September 13th.
Okay, so give me those again. 1M and 1AA, and what was the other one? N?
N.
Okay, so let me just say this before... Okay, if I, let, let me say this to the people that are in line. If you are here on item 1N, that has been continued. Correct, Madam Clerk? 1N, 1M, and 1AA.
That is correct.
So continued until when?
September 13th.
Okay, so if you are here on 1N, 1M, or 1AA, those items have been continued to September 13th, which would give you an opportunity to chat with the gentleman in the front row with the red vest on. If any of you that are up here to speak are on one of those items, those items have been continued. We will not vote on them today. So, and if what I, so I have a Ms. Serna on 1AA, is that Ms. Serna?
Yes.
Okay, so your item, Ms. Serna, has been continued. You may want to chat with the gentleman in the red. Do I have a Fay Nahad? Do I have, is that Richard Long? Richard, your 1M has been continued as well. And if I could have this young lady identify herself.
My name is Maria Rodriguez.
Yes, ma'am.
And I am here because I received a letter about the property. And I didn't know, what was this about? Because it is in English.
And what's the address?
I need help.
And what is the address again?
It, it is, um, 8013 North Hesperian Avenue. It is item, item 1L.
I got it, so why don't we just, if, if you could sit with her for a moment, and then let me look for, do we have Fay? Okay, would you tell Ms. Rodriguez, Ms. Rodriguez, could you translate her? Give Ms. Rodriguez. Tell Ms. Rodriguez that we are continuing her item for three weeks. That will put it at September 13th. So no action will be taken today. She needs to contact the department. Okay, Mr. Akala? And I'm still looking for Fay Nahad or Nah, Nah Jaid. Yes?
The people come to you confused, because these liens that you put on their houses are really just a way for the city to enrich themselves.
Sergeants, could you move that center, that center chair?
And all these liens are really, should be completely illegal. You should not be able to take homes away from people just for small quantities like $4,000, $3,000, $8,000. You go and put a lien on their house, and then you go and take their property and sell it to the sharks. And that's the way the city works. The city is a real estate monger that creates homelessness. And you sit here, Mrs. Martinez, her beautiful... And you see it here, Mrs. Martinez, her beautiful speech about the homeless. And these people here, oh, we're trying to help the homeless, but let's go and get, and get money out of these poor people that already have a property. What kind of a city are you? You're a money, hungry, greedy, shark-infested city. That's what you are? You're a bunch of motherfuckers. If I, if I had, if I had Donald Trump here, I would put a stick up his ass, believe me.
No, you're off the subject. Thank you, Mr. Akala. You can, you can go sit down. Okay, do we, no, now you're disrupting. Just sit down. Do we have a Ruspy Nelson, Ruspy Nelson? Okay, so that concludes general public comment on this. I, and your name? Well, I don't have your card, but come on down. Just come on down, dear. And your name, when you get here, just tell us, identify yourself. Yes?
Lydia Ponse Venice. I'd like to first recognize, recognize that we're on Tongva land and give thanks. For the record, Mr. Bonin has denied meeting, um...
No, 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 you're not on the subject.
What's the subject? General public comment?
No, we're not on general public comment.
What are we on, sir?
We're on item 1. Why don't you, I will call you a general public comment. So if you could please sit down. Okay, let us prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
And if I said general public comment, that was my mistake, and we were on item 1. Okay, so now we're gonna deal with item 2. Mr. City Attorney, I have an access of about 50-plus cards. So what we're gonna do on this item, we will have a 25-minute hearing with one minute per person. Let us start off with Christopher Cox. Christian, I think it's Arch, Archavelle, Steve Herman or Herman, Andy Lehman, please come forward as I ca... You, the sooner you get up here, the more time we'll have. So don't wait for order. If I've called you, just come up, identify yourself, and we take it from there. Yes, sir, you are?
Steve Human.
Okay, go ahead.
Good morning, council members. My name is Steve Human. I work for a company called Sidewalk Enterprises that has owned property since 1976 along the Venice boardwalk. We have been plagued with many, many issues for many, many years on the Venice boardwalk, from trash and graffiti, to drug dealing and drug use, to, to crime, robbery, fighting, stabbings. We need help from the city, and we have asked for help from the city, and they have tried. You, you have tried. Unfortunately, you know, we have asked for police, you have worked your best, but there are limited resources. We have, on the boardwalk, I have employees who have been accosted, assaulted at gunpoint on their way home. I have, you know, witness stabbings, so we...
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you, so if I can get Mr. Cox, if I could get Mr. Cox, followed by Mr. Lehman?
Yes, my name is Andy Lehman. I own and operate the property at 1305 Oceanfront Walk Venice Beach Suites Hotel. I have owned this property for over 30 years.
Okay, wait a minute, Ms., let's hold this time. Okay, let, let's, let's listen to everyone, okay? So let's respect him, 'cause many of you will be brought up, and you want people to respect you as well. So go ahead, sir.
In 1986, when I got this property, it was full of gangs, drug dealers, prostitution, and it was a mess. Even, we did not have a homeless problem at that point, 'cause it was too dangerous down at the beach for the homeless to go there. I've been past president. I'm a believer that this bid is a win-win-win for everybody in the budget. There is additional money for homeless outreach and services for the city. Venice Beach is the number-one visitor, visitor in Los Angeles County, and, and it's a win for all locals, I think, because we can work together, and the owners are putting up the money to help clean up the boardwalk and increase our safety and security.
Thank you, sir. If I could have the next speaker, please identify.
Good morning.
And you are?
My name is Christopher Cox. I am a resident, residence for over 20 years. I've been employed at the Sidewalk Cafe for 16 years. My current position there is an assistant jungle manager there. I support the bid. I spend 50 hours a week on the boardwalk. I deal directly with the people who are there. I call for assistance often. As many times for violence that happens directly in front of the restaurant, it is not enough. We have only over 50, 90 employees who are, their safety is our concern. 90 employees who are, live and work in Venice. We are directly across from the skate park, two blocks north from Windward Circle, and we need, need more help. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So if I could have the next, identify yourself.
Hi, good morning, my name is Kristin Archival. I'm the general manager of the Sidewalk Cafe. I've been the general manager for 20 years. I also am a resident of Venice Beach. And I have just noticed an increase in the lawlessness, the homelessness, the filth. There has been an attempt to clean it up, but we need more help. I have, I've witnessed tourists and residents and my employees, they've had bikes stolen, purses stolen, been beaten down. I've witnessed killings, stabbings. There is, it's scary. It's not safe. And I'm down there 50 hours a week, and day in and day out, people make comments on their safety. And I love Venice. I love the eclectic, artsy, fun part of Venice, but it's druggie, it's, it's scary. So I'm in support of the bid. Thank you.
Okay, so now let's stop the clock. I'm gonna try to call up some people who are not supportive. So I have, I believe, Laddie Williams, Laddie Williams, David Ewing, is it Angelica? Last name begins with an O, Ovosko, and Sylvia O'Rothe or something? Yes, ma'am, if you had, identify yourself.
Hi, I'm Laddie Williams. I've lived in Venice all my life, so all this crime that everybody's up here speaking about, it's to be thought about. But anyway, to, you guys were talking earlier about the proprietorship with the taxis and how it leaves people, some being served and some not being. I think the bid would do the same thing to the beach. The beach has been free since I've known it, number-one tourist attraction. We could take this money that people have for the bid and do something prosperous and, and do something good, get some bathrooms open. Let's make, keep Venice free and keep the beach free, and we don't need any more policing. We need to learn how to police ourselves. And if we do that and do it with respect, we can get somewhere, and we can have a beach that's for everybody, accessible for everybody, and that everybody can get in and have a good time and come to see what Venice Beach is all about. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Hey, if we keep the applause down, more people will get to speak. Yes, sir, identify yourself.
Good morning, my name's David Ewing, a longtime Venice resident, and I want to ask you, please do not Uber our law enforcement. You just had this conversation about, about taxis versus ride sharing. You're gonna put a force in place that doesn't have any standards, that doesn't follow public process, isn't responsible to the public. So this will be governed by a nonprofit, according to the bylaws of, of that corporation, which was just created three months ago, and the public has not been allowed to see the bylaws. And I, I'm wondering if you have, because otherwise, you're voting for a black box. You don't know what you're voting for. So please, that's not public process, that's not an opportunity for the public to make informed comment, and, and that's, that's not a reputable public process. So one of the bid analysts in the city clerk's office told me that bids are generally formed to promote a local identity or brand, but this one is using 73% of its budget...
Thank you. Thank you, so the next speaker, please come forward. And you, and you identify yourself. What is your name?
Hello, my name is Sylvia O'Rothe, and I'm a very longtime resident of Venice. Thank you for letting me speak this morning. I am here to ask you to vote no, or at least postpone your vote on the Venice Boardwalk bid to get more community input. I've already voiced some of my concerns to the California Coastal Commission in Santa Cruz, and here are a few of them. The bid process has been an opaque, undemocratic mess. Only 28% of private property owners voted in favor of the bid. The city, which owns 25% of the property in the bid zone, brought the total to 50, bought the total to only 53% voting in favor. As voting rights are based on how much commercial property is owned, tenants, including residents and small businesses, and other stakeholders, have no voice in the process, and many are opposed. We've spoken to hundreds of them. The city will pay over $450,000 annually in bid assessments out of general fund dollars, but the city will have no input on how the bid...
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. So, yes, identi, identify yourself, please.
Hi, my name is Angelique Orosco, I work in Venice. I had something prepared here to say with statistics and other research about the bid, but after hearing what everyone said before us, I just wanna say that I traveled three hours to this amazing community. I'm safe, I walk, I bike, I meet my family out here. We don't need any private security to clean or control our Venice, Venice is beautiful. And I, I was coming here this morning just to, to talk about the lack of transparency when it came to creating this bid, and I know that a lot of people mentioned that just now, and will mention that, but I just wanna make a point that I do travel to be in this community, to be part of this people, to be part of this community, and to help them. So that was all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now I want Mark Sokel, followed by, is it Lydia Ponse? Followed by Jeff Harris? And then an Ashlyn, I think, or Ashley Richardson Hall? Yes, sir, identify yourself.
Good morning, honorable city council members. I'm Mark Sokel, and I'm a board member of the Venice Boardwalk Association and participate in Councilman Bonin's Venice Forward effort to end homelessness in Venice. My family owns the Hotel Irwin in Venice Beach, and our family history in Venice dates back to the 1950s. For over 20 years, property owners have discussed forming a bid. Finally, we've come together in an unprecedented way alongside Councilman Bonin to move this forward and make it happen. If we take it, take a look at the big picture, forming a bid in Venice Beach is a big win. The goal is to provide a safer and cleaner community for everyone, residents, tourists, and all Angelenos to enjoy. Despite the attention and resources directed to the area, Venice Beach and nearby areas are still in dire need of the extra attention that a bid could provide. Finally, I want to thank Councilman Bonin for his leadership, making the bid a priority, and urge you to support the bid.
Thank you, and, and so identify yourself?
Lydia Ponse Venice. The California Guidance for Conformance to the Coastal Act and the bid activities described by the Los Angeles General Plan and the Venice Land Use Plan section describes everything but security. It describes basically an ordinance that has everything to do with parking facilities, promoting tree planting, and sponsoring cleanups, improving of general environment, and development of maintenance of small parks. The bid comprised of visitors serving areas does not say anything about serving the community with more security. We have so much tax revenue in our three miles of Venice, specifically the beach, that we should be getting these services from the city. There's no need for us to do this bid. It is illegal and immoral because they have not met with the community. These, these meetings have been behind closed doors, sir, behind closed doors. They did not get the community behind this. There's very few people who know about this. Otherwise, this would be filled, and we'd be here definitely all day. It wouldn't matter how late you'd call this on the agenda, sir. It would not matter.
Thank you. So if I could have the next, next speaker, please identify yourself.
My name is Jeff Harris.
Yes, sir.
And I manage real estate in the Venice area, particularly on the Venice boardwalk, where at night, it seems like it's an unoccupied territory. There's no, there are no...
No, you can't disrupt, hold tight, hold this time. I want everybody to be afforded their opportunity to speak, so no outbursts, even if you disagree with what someone has to say. So if I call your name, I'm gonna fight to make sure you get every second that you're supposed to have, and I'm gonna do the same with each and every one. So if you, if I can identify who does outbreak, I will ask you to leave. So why don't we start the clock again on this gentleman's time?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Again, my name is Jeff Harris, and I manage real estate in the Venice area. I've done so for 12 years, and I've seen some horrendous things. I've seen the Pacific Division try to do their best effort to handle all the crime and all the activity at night, but at night, it literally is lawlessness. We, the Venice art crawl and other activities have been created just to try to create some kind of a presence there at night, but at night, there's all kind of crimes. Vendors have been attacked, restaurateurs have been attacked, businessmen have been attacked, and of course, we've had tourists that have been killed. These kind of bad publicity is not good for the city of Venice, and we need to do something better. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Yes?
I'm Ashley Richardson Hall, and I'm with the Homeless Bill of Rights Coalition.
Shh, go ahead.
I oppose any and all resources to implement bids in Venice. As we know from the Don Don bids, these public safety guards are used to stalk and harass poor and homeless residents. We also know that the bids work with the LAPD, who already have a deadly presence in Venice. As a resident of LA, I find the public space of Venice Beach a place of diverse community, immense tranquility, and a sacred area for rejuvenation and healing. I cannot imagine the damage the bids would have to this unique community, nor will I sit by and allow these businesses in the city to gentrify the beach and the city of Venice. The beach in Venice is a public space for all, for all people. Put money into permanent supportive housing, not more money into these public, or, public or private security guards. Again, no to the Venice bids.
Thank you. Okay, so now, if I could get Tara or Tara Divine, looks like a Michael Dill, Suzanne Thompson, and Linda Lux, please come forward. Identify yourself.
Good morning, council members. Will all those in support of the bid please stand briefly?
Identify yourself.
Tara Divine?
Go ahead.
Will all those in support of the bid please stand briefly? Venice is controversy because Venice is passionate. You will not see perfect unity here today because that is not Venice, but what you will see is a massive, first-of-its-kind commitment by property owners to a thoughtful solution to intractable issues. There will be no bid police force, just ambassadors. Only ineligible properties are excluded from the boundaries. The public property within the bid defines the area. Excluding it would exclude the very heart of Venice. More than 58% of property owners signed their petitions. Every owner has been mailed twice. We have met with all known opponents who would meet with us. A supportive property owner who could not attend today reminded me of this quote, "Every adversity carries with it the seed of an equal..."
Thank you, so if I could get the next speaker? Yes?
Hello, hello?
Yes.
Hey, this is Mike Dill, Councilman Bonin. Thanks for having me speak here. I oppose the bid. What this woman just said is not true. The bid was created in secrecy, and it represents the interests of very few wealthy property owners. It will, it will create a police state. It does not represent the community whatsoever. It needs to be subject to due process. The last thing that Venice needs is a police force without oversight controlled by wealthy property owners. It's not right, and it doesn't benefit the community, and this is an embarrassment that our legal process is being treated this way. The, the people who are strongly behind the bid have not done justice to the community or had voices in the process, and as a result, this does not represent the community in any way whatsoever, and we need to have a community represented in the right way in Venice, and this is not right. Thank you.
Thank you. So if I could get the next? When you guys do that, you cut your time down. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, good afternoon, or good morning, council members. I'm Suzanne Thompson. I'm a former president of Grassroots Venice Neighborhood Council, co-founder of the Venice Arts Council, and co, and founder... Arts Council, and co-founder of the Venice Japanese American Memorial Monument Committee in Venice. I'm speaking on behalf of myself today, and in very contradiction to a lot of my friends here. But the reason I want to be in support of this bid is not for more police necessarily, but it is to clean up the boardwalk. I've been working for 10 years on public art restoration and maintenance on Venice Beach, and the bathrooms are in terrible condition, and it's very hard for me to go to people, to foundations, and thank you, Councilman Bonin, for your support, to ask for funds to restore our beautiful public art. We have Venice Beat poets recognized on these bathroom walls, and also on the police substation. We've got beautiful benches that we're trying to restore with historic tiles on them. We've got lots of work that was done in 2000 that needs to be maintained. I want to make sure that at this rate...
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, so if I could get Ms. Lux? Hold tight. Followed by Melissa Williams, followed by Becky Dennison, followed by Rosina Lardieri, I think? Please come forward. Go ahead.
Okay, excuse me. Good morning, council members. Nice to see you. My name is Linda Lux. I'm the past president of the Venice Neighborhood Council and president of the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners. As a 45-year resident of Venice, I'm really sad today because I really think this bid is dead wrong for Venice. I support a lot of things our council member does, but I strongly disagree with him on this one, because I think it benefits the property owners on the Oceanfront Walk, who are going to pass through their expenses down to their tenants and make things even more affordable in Venice. And I think it's going to be the death of cool in Venice. And as we know, Venice is internationally known as being cool. It's not going to be with another layer of policing, whatever you want to call it, ambassadors, but they are going to add another layer of uncomfortableness with people who come from all over the city, who, people of color, of our homeless residents. They think it's going to be a solution, but it's not going to be a solution. It's just going to add to the problem.
Thank you, thank you. So Ms. Williams, please come forward.
Yes. Hello, council members. Mr. President, my name is Melissa Williams. I'm director of sales at Hotel Irwin in Venice Beach. I'm also a resident and native of the Santa Monica, Venice area, and I've been a part of this community for over 30 years. This is home to me. I'm in support of the BID because we love this community, but we do need help. Through my job, I have the pleasure of welcoming guests from all over the world, but right now, we have serious crime and blight in the Venice Beach area. People are getting hurt, and we need support of a bid that will be managed by local stakeholders who also care deeply about Venice and want to preserve its culture while improving cleanliness and safety. Let's just make Venice safe for everyone to enjoy: residents, tourists, and locals alike. We all deserve a safe place in Venice.
Thank you. So if I could get next? Yes, identify.
Good morning. My name is Becky Dennison. I work with Venice Community Housing. We also own and manage property all throughout Venice, in the bid area and in the surrounding area. We are adamantly opposed to a business improvement district. As a mission-driven organization that cares about low-income and homeless residents, this is the wrong structure. There is absolutely no voice for low-income people, for non-commercial property owners, for homeless residents, who have been targeted across the city by private security, as you all know, in bids. I want to raise three issues. I want to say that the city carries way too much weight in this vote. 25% of the property, including a dog park, a free speech zone, the basketball courts, things that have no place in a business improvement district. I also want to say the petition mailing did not meet the Government Code Section 36621. You did not mail us the management plan for review in the petitions. And I also want to say that your own regulations say that people should not expect a favorable vote from the city council with a significant number of protests, and there are a significant number of protests. You are not obligated to approve this bid, and you should not.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, if you could identify yourself?
Hi, my name is Rosina Lardieri, and I'm a property owner in the bid district, and I'm here to speak in support of the bid. I believe that having a bid in Venice Beach will make it safer and cleaner. I don't care what anyone says. I've lived in a lot of tough cities. I grew up in Newark, New Jersey. I grew up in a ghetto. I don't feel safe walking down the boardwalk at night. I don't feel safe. It's not clean. I don't want to have to clean up fecal matter in front of my house every day. It's not good. I believe the bid will provide essential services that will make the entire community feel safer using the beautiful beach, which is in Venice, which will continue to be an inspiration to artists and others who come there.
Thank you. So if I can get General Dogan, General Dugan, Scott Spector, Sylvia H., and I think this is Yolanda Gonzalez, please come forward. Don't wait, just come on. Come right ahead. We want to give you as much time as we can. Go ahead.
Scott Spector, I'm a property owner in the bid. My property is regularly covered in graffiti, human excrement. I have regularly been harassed in front of my house, and it is not safe to walk down the beach in the evening. This is the first time that a group of people have come together and are trying to clean up the waterfront. I don't want to be contributing money to it, but it's not getting done by the city, so if I need to, I will. I am in full support of the bid. Thank you.
Thank you. Please come forward and identify yourself.
My name is Sylvia Hernandez from Los Angeles Community Action Network.
Wait a minute, wait, 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 wait.
Los Angeles Community?
Your name again, hold her time.
Sylvia Hernandez?
Got you.
Sylvia H.?
No, I had to find it. Give her her minute again. I got you.
Okay, thank you. I call to oppose the Venice Beach bid. Business Improvement District, Clean and Safe Program, that hasn't been described in detail in public documents. But still, it doesn't have any real impact in the community, but criminalizing the people that lives on the streets. And it uses as a part of the apparatus that LAPD uses to promote more homelessness. I go against it because I know that $460,000, it will be, it will be used from the general funds to keep, keep, keep taking away the characters of communities like Venice Beach. Also, I'm opposed...
Thank, thank you. Please come forward and identify yourself.
General Dogan, bids are solely designed to remove poor and homeless people out of public space. Bid guards downtown have all been under fire because they are poorly trained, do illegal stops and seizures, and harass and brutalize residents in the area. Every bid downtown has either been sued or in litigation for illegally attempting to police public space. Bid guards are citizens like you and I. They don't have special police powers, so stop trying to make them. I encourage the city to vote no. The city is in enough litigation right now. Black Lives Matter is protesting outside your door right now because of your police efforts and decisions that is made in this room right now. If you've got a problem with homeless people, that you need to build more housing, that's the problem, right? And the stuff that these folks in Venice is talking about, they need to be at the Police Commission talking to Chief Beck about it. Ain't no private security guards are going to be able to solve your problem, because private security guards understand you're a public, I mean, a private citizen, a public citizen, just like we are. They don't have special police problems. So my encouragement to you is to do some real stuff...
Thank you, sir.
Solve the problem here in the city.
Thank you. So, thank you. So if I can get, is this Ms. Gonzalez? And I need Nicole Siskin? Nicole Siskin, please come forward. Yes, ma'am.
Si, buenas tardes. Soy Yolanda Gonzalez. He sido residente y aparte...
Can I get you to hold one second?
I can translate myself afterwards.
Oh, well, go for it. You stay there. All right, go ahead, ma'am.
He sido residente y dueña de propiedad durante 48 años, y vengo en representación de la comunidad hispana que vive en Venice, sobre todo los trabajadores. Yo casi fui atacada tres veces dentro de mi propiedad, y desgraciadamente no puedo llegar, dejar que la policía llegue a tiempo a recibir mi queja. Más que nada, favorezco este bid, porque ustedes no están haciendo su trabajo para protegernos, y tenemos que tener protección antes que nada para poder solicitar buenos trabajos y negocios que salgan adelante. Segunda, es importante que los que yo como una persona inversionista de esta ciudad sostengan mi dinero, porque si no, yo ya estoy a punto de vender todo, porque ustedes no proporcionan...
Okay, 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 okay. Now you better translate. Your minutes are...
Thank you, sir. I have been a resident of 48 years within Venice. I am a property owner. I am a taxpayer, and we are not getting our services in security. We need to promote businesses. We need to promote people to come and work in a safe place. I am here in representation of the Hispanic community that not only lives in Venice, but also works in Venice, because I have been attacked already three times, and unfortunately, inside my property, because the police can't get there on time. And that's coming out of city commissioners' meetings and businesses that we take care of in order to provide what the community needs to find out. We need protection, and it's very important. I sustain this bid because I'm within the boundary, and people who do not support it is because they think they're going to lose everything, and people are getting threatened because they think they can't sell. Yes, they can sell. We've gotten to a generation in which we are getting old, and it's time for us to move on.
Thank you, thank you. So if I can get Ms., if we can get... No, 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 no. Sir, this is the second time. I'm trying to treat you as respectfully as possible. One more outburst. Okay, the last speaker on this item is Ms. Siskin. No, 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 wait, wait, wait. No, wait. When you ca... And I respect each and every one of you for coming down here, but when I began this subject, I told you what the time was going to be. It was going to be 25 minutes. It's already almost 30. So that's the way it is. That's what we're going to do. Ms. Siskin, go ahead, your minute. The folk that didn't speak your name will be entered into the record. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm representing six property owners in Venice. We feel that the Business Improvement District will favorably impact property owners on the boardwalk. However, they are asking the remainder, the Zone Two people, to subsidize that by... Their vote is not counting. 25% of the people are on the boardwalk, 25% of the city, and the rest of the people are going to be asked to subsidize the Venice bid, which is a very expensive thing and will not provide the kind of services that we need in, for offices, commercial, and other zones. It's not the boardwalk. We do not support it. It's not fair. It's unequitable, and I... I'm sorry. I'm too much pressure.
No, you're impeding on our time. Go ahead.
Sorry. The city should not be able to choose what the property taxes are going to be for the rest of the people in this bid. It's unfair. I do believe the boardwalk needs help, but not from us.
Okay, thank you. Now, there will be no vote today. No, wait, wait, wait. There will be no vote today. We are closing the public comment. There's no vote today. I'm going to defer now to Mr. Bonin. You're disrupting the meeting, Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thanking to colleagues...
No, you're disrupting the... Hold tight. You're disrupting the meeting. You're disrupting the meeting. We're as fair, we're as fair as possible, okay?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Now, Mr. Bonin.
And thank you to my colleagues for paying such attention today. I want to thank everyone from both sides of this issue who came down today for a spirited and quintessentially Venice conversation about a controversial issue. Let me say a few things to clarify a few misconceptions.
Okay, let's stop. Let's stop. Okay, Ms., folks. Folks, folks, folks. Folks, no, folks. The debate is over. For today, it is done. The public comment has been closed. If you yell and scream, you're not helping your case. I have warned you on at least three or four occasions to be cool. If you continue to do that, then all of you will leave, okay? So let's let Mr. Bonin speak, and then we will move on to the next item. No action is being taken today. Mr. Bonin?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'll sort of explain what that means as well. Thanks again for both sides of this very controversial issue coming down here today to have your voices heard. Let me, for a second, try to correct some of the wild misperceptions about what the bid is and what the process is. The process for establishing a bid, which is an assessment district, is established by state law. Under that, what happens is that people are mailed ballots. They have 45 days in which to return those ballots, the impacted property owners, who are being asked whether or not to assess themselves. At the conclusion of that period, a public hearing is held. After the public hearing is held, the ballots are counted. Those ballots will be counted this afternoon, and an announcement about the ballot results will be made during tomorrow's council meeting. That is the process, the public process, set out by state law. Let me say a few words about some of the misconceptions that I heard here today. I understand that this is a controversial issue, and it's a difficult one for folks to wrestle with, as are most issues in Venice. But folks have identified on both sides that there are a lot of problems in Venice, and for a long time, nothing got done because controversy prevented action. And I think, like myself, most folks in Venice are done with nothing getting done. And so I respect that folks have gotten together and have been interested in forming a bid, and I have been supportive of that. There is a wild mischaracterization that this is somehow about privatization of public resources. There is, there is a false, the false statement that this somehow turns governance of public facilities over to private entities.
Okay. Mr. Bonin, I'm going to give you one more shot at it, and if not, we're going to clear.
Thank you, Mr. President. This turns resources over to private industries. It does not do so. What it does is it allows the bid to augment city services by adding more maintenance, more promotion, and more security. Now, at Venice Beach, over the past year or so, we have had people beaten in the head with chairs, people assaulted, people assaulted...
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bonin.
Mr. President, please, I'd really, really like to...
Okay.
I'm okay with this. We have people assaulted with skateboards. We have had people stabbed. We've had bicycles stolen. And LAPD cannot be everywhere, and we need more eyes and ears down there. And the implication that having security forces that can help prevent violent assault or theft is somehow anti-homeless is a malignant, dangerous defamation of the people who are homeless in Venice, and it's as bad as some of the Trump-like forces who paint a portrait of everyone who's homeless in Venice as being criminal. It's absolutely wrong. The victims of so much of the violence are themselves homeless. So it is very important, I think, to have these services. I would note that many of you, I think, expressed a genuine concern for people who are homeless in Venice. I would note that many of you who have done so have not yet weighed in publicly, or to me or to my colleagues, in favor of actual proposals I have put forward to help address homelessness: permanent supportive housing in Venice, storage facilities, bathrooms, mobile showers. And I would invite you to do so because there is a way that we can work together to actually address homelessness. So, colleagues, thank you so much for listening today. Thanks for, both sides, for coming down. The votes will be counted this afternoon, and we'll be announcing the results tomorrow.
Okay, so this does close the hearing. So, Madam Clerk, what is now before this body? Ma'am, you're going to have to get out of the center aisle. We're moving on to, what is, what is next?
A general public comment.
Okay, so now, I have Mr. Krikorian?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. If I may, I'd just like to make a brief introduction...
Go right ahead.
...before we go to general public comment. CD2 has been blessed in the past months to have the service of some terrific...
Hold your, hold your, hold your point. Let us wait till the chamber's clear, because we want, we definitely want to hear exactly what you have to say, Mr. Krikorian. Please exit the facility, the chambers quietly. Again, thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Let's just wait a moment. Let's just wait a moment. Please exit the chambers. Please exit the chambers. Thank you all again for coming. Thank you also very much for coming. Please exit the chambers. Please exit the chambers. This issue, we have moved on from that issue. Please exit the chambers. Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. My office and the people of the East Valley have been very well-served over the last few months by a group of extraordinary students who've served as interns in my office, and I just wanted to take a moment to recognize a couple of them. We've had six this year, and two of them are here with me today. First, Axel Sarkisian is a resident of Granada Hills. He's going to UCLA, pursuing a bachelor's degree in political science with a concentration in international relations, with a minor in public affairs. He's active in Model United Nations and is an Eagle Scout, so we're going to be seeing a lot of him, I know, in the future. This year, he helped me with a big project that we're doing to bring public art to the district by painting our utility boxes throughout the district. He's done a lot of research related to that, and generally on art and parks funding and business development issues as well. So I wanted to just take a moment, first of all, to thank Alex-- I'm sorry, Axel Sarkisian for his extraordinary work for the people of CD Two. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And Nick Weinmeister is from the Central Valley. He is currently pursuing a master's of public policy at the Saul Price School at the University of Southern California, and so that fact alone tells me that he's going to be doing great things in his life. He completed an externship with us previously and then came back to serve this summer as an intern. He's working on policy and communications issues, and he was very instrumental in some of the work that we've been doing lately on business development and homelessness issues, which are about the biggest hot-button issues that we've had. So, Nick, thank you very much for your great service.
Thank you, thank you. And good luck to the both of you.
And I just also want to recognize they couldn't be here today, but Harper Lambert, Shira Klaske-Gamer, Amy Frazen, and Mehdi Yedigarian were also among our interns, and they all did a terrific job. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Okay, Garen Papazian, Jacqueline Richardson, maybe a Darcy Frank, John Gregor, John Gregor, John-- I can't pronounce that. John Gregor. Well, anyway, come forward. Let's start out. Just come and identify yourself. If I called your name, just come on up, let me know who you are.
My name is Dory Frank, not Darcy Frank.
I couldn't hear, go ahead.
Dory, D-O-R-Y.
Okay, got you.
So, I've spoken to Councilman Corretts, and I have not spoken to Councilman Ryu. We're talking about revising the rent control ordinance. Jerry Solomon lives in your district, Councilman Ryu, and he has not gotten you to return his phone calls. What needs to be done with the ordinance is to revise it so that people who are on fixed incomes, disabled, and elderly people are not subject to the rent increase. I know in West Hollywood, part of their ordinance is making improvements. I know it's a controversial city. I know Councilman Sedile is not here today. They're having a meeting next month, but as you know, Mr. President, it is also on Mayor Garcetti's agenda that there should not be homeless. So after consulting with my councilmen, I'm bringing the subject up of this council, bringing up rent control and revising it. That's why I came here.
Thank you, sir. So if I can have next, is that you, Ms. Richardson? If I've called your name, please come forward. Ms. Richardson, come on now, come on. And I'm looking for Irma Munoz. Pablo, yes, ma'am.
People killing black people do not mean to do that. Many of the LAPD officers are Russian. There may be white Russian, Kremlin Jews, and plain Russians killing black people, but they don't mean to do that. They also have white holograms killing black people. They don't mean to do that. They've been misprogrammed. You have to ask the Russian people to tell you, to explain to you how and why they're killing black people. They can do that if you ask them. If you don't ask them, you won't hear about it. Holograms are programs that look, walk, talk, and act like humans, but they're not. They're programs. The holograms are made by Russia and also by people in California. The Russian people know how to handle these holograms. It sounds crazy, but it's advanced technology, and you need to ask about it.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. So do we have Pablo Ampura, Irma Munoz, Raul Marcias, Lydia Ponce, Gerica, Jaren Papazian, and I think--
Most of them left.
A Dorsey, Dorcy Frank. Okay, go ahead, identify yourself.
Lydia Ponce from Venice. For the record, Mr. Bonin has denied meeting with women of color--
Direct your comments to the body as a whole.
--for the, for the community of council people to know. Currently, we have applications of development in Venice for single-family dwelling that's ignoring, skirting, skipping, and erasing and falsifying applications, but yet the city planning is approving these, and this is business-as-usual over the counter. We have an LUCP chair that is currently the king of violator and the master of conflict of interest with his legendary applications in Venice. Nothing can be done to preserve the affordable housing in the city of Los Angeles better than a moratorium. If you could please listen to me, sir, a moratorium for the entire city of Los Angeles. Otherwise, what's being offered by Venice Forward or other unhoused programs is just crumbs or temporary. We really need to have a moratorium on the affordable housing that we do have currently, RSO or anything in Mellow in Venice, because otherwise, we're just playing a game and everything's a ruse. So, Mr. Bonin, I don't know when you're going to meet with us. Maybe you could encourage him to meet with us.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Your time's expired. Danielle Murray, and I can't quite make out your card, ma'am. I think it's Malloy. I could be wrong. But I-- Is there Danielle Murray? Go right ahead.
Hello, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I want to speak directly to Mr. Bonin. He is my council representative. Nine people signed the original petition for the ballot. Two of them have been cited by the city attorney with operating illegal businesses--
Now, you have to speak on general-- Hold her time, Venice-related issues. You cannot speak on the topic that we just discussed.
I'm speaking on--
Venice in general.
Okay, the city committed $426,000 to the bid with criminals, with people currently cited by the city attorney. When those citations were issued by the city attorney, Carl Lambert, one of Mr. Bonin's main cohorts in business in Venice, was the sitting president of the Chamber of Commerce. It would be unconscionable for any of you, any of you, any of you, to sign your name and commit city funds in a backdoor scenario where nobody has bylaws, and once the money is attributed, it's a five-year period. The city has no control, the public has no control. It would be unconscionable, and--
Thank you.
--we have reported to every single--
Thank you, your time is expired. Thank you. Mr. Harris Dawson? No, ma'am, your time is--
Fourth with on item number 24, please.
Fourth with on item 24 per Mr. Harris Dawson's request. That closes general pub-- I don't have a card. I do not have your card. Sergeant, show him to-- I don't have it. I do not have-- If I don't have your card, I cannot call it. All right. Okay, that concludes general public comment. That brings us where, Madam Clerk?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Okay, they are posted, they are referred, announcements, members. No announcements. If all could please rise-- If all could please rise for adjourned motions. If everyone in the council chamber would please rise so we could pay our respect to those who have transitioned. In the council chambers, please rise. I'm looking to my right side, Mr. Weezer's side, Mr. O'Farrell's side. I don't see any adjourned motions. I now look to my left, Mr. Harris Dawson, Mr. Bloomingfield's side. I don't see any. With that said, members, this meeting is adjourned.